Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, I don't know.
All right. Good evening to all of you. All right, good evening. Hello?
Quite a bit.
Excuse me. We need to start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting, Wednesday, May 8, 2019. It is 6:30 PM, and we are at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Robert Haskell, our clerk, Jim Akbachi. Far left, Attorney Jen Kendrick, Town Planning Office, Jasmine. And myself, the Chair, Nazir El-Khulasi. We have some meetings to look at. Take us a couple of minutes.
I've had the opportunity to review both April 10th. I've had the opportunity to review both April 10th and April 24th minutes. Find them to be acceptable as presented, and then therefore move to accept as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. Okay, on a continued public hearing, dash nine dash nineteen, Farmacanis, 59 Main Street. Okay, Jim.
We have a letter in the file here requesting a continuance till the next available meeting.
And this will be the last continuance, so if they don't show up next time, we just close it. Okay, so most likely, like I heard, they're not coming back. They want to let it go, but we'll give them one more time.
Okay. I did, Mr. Chairman, I did-
Come forward, just your name for the-
Dennis Connery.
Yep.
I did check at the planning office today at noon time to see if, so I'd like to know when that letter, when did that letter come in?
Five eight two nineteen, four forty-four PM.
This after, almost quarter of five today.
Today.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion to continue until May 22nd. Do I have a second?
Twenty-second or the 24th?
In May. Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay.
Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Okay, so that's continued.
Zero, zero.
Fifteen nine. Okay. All right, continued public hearing, thirteen dash nineteen, 2416 Cranberry Highway LLC, 2416 Cranberry Highway.
I have a letter in the file-
I'm not really hearing that because I did ask continuing.
I have a letter in the file on that one as well, also asking for a continuance from May 9th to the next available meeting, which would be May 22nd.
Okay, anyone here for that matter? I hear none. Okay, do I have a second? Second to continue?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, continued.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, other business and discussion, one dash eighteen, Wareham Marketplace.
Wendy signage. Can we have correspondence? No, no.
Just give us, just give us a minute. You could pass those and give us a minute. For the record, regular member Veronica DeVine came in at 6:34. Okay, so we have some discussion on one dash eighteen, Wareham Marketplace. You name another, sir, and let us know what you're doing.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering, here tonight representing Wendy's. I gave a couple of extra copies to Jasmine. We're here tonight to discuss, or at least maybe get some guidance on a proposed sign package that Wendy's would like to start to proceed with, or at least to do some research and move forward. We've reached out to the Building Department. I believe we made, we've been made aware of the situation there where there's currently no building official in place to review and discuss compliance of a proposed sign package that we have. We further reached out to the Planning Department, which somewhat directed us to your board to seek some guidance as to how to continue to move forward. Obviously, we like to get applications in, but we also would like to have some preliminary discussions with whether it's this board, or maybe the board's consultant, just to have a understanding and a concurrence of what we're proposing, and if there's any relief that may be necessary, we could also proceed that as well. So what we've done is provided somewhat of an informal package for you this evening to take a look at. We understand it's new, and you're shuffling through, so I could briefly run through what we're proposing and talk about that, or if you want to defer to maybe have one of your consultants review, and we could continue that dialogue in that manner.
No, we could, did you go to the Building Commissioner? Did the Building Commissioner give a letter, or did they just send you here for suggestions?
They just sent us here for suggestions.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, so let me ask you something. All right, we know eighteen feet. What's the height of your sign?
This, this-
Okay.
The freestanding sign?
Did you go through the bylaws? Did you ask him for any variance?
Yes. We've gone through, and there is one sign that we would like to discuss, which is on the southeast building. It's labeled, if you look at the front page, is 2A. That is the second sheet in, it's at the back of the building.
Okay.
There's two signs there. So in aggregate, based on the linear footage of the rear of the property, we're at forty-three square feet there, where thirty square feet is the max, based on the narrow width of the building. What's being proposed is the Wendy's scripture, and then the small branding of picture of Wendy above it. So on the second sheet, we show that elevation-
Let's stay it there quick. So you're saying you are, the bylaw allows thirty?
Thirty square feet.
And you are?
We are forty-three point zero four. Twenty-nine point seven feet. There's also eleven by seventeen chart, a compliance chart that was in the package to help ease the review.
That include the red, or just the letters?
That is just the letters and the circle of the branding. Couple of pages in, we actually have that sign enlarged with dimensions and the like. So that's-
So that's the square feet, not including the white space behind the logo, or to the right and left of the logo?
Uh, the right and left of the logo.
I'm calling the Wendy's face, the little girl Wendy, the logo.
Okay.
So surrounding her, and to the right and left, or above the word Wendy's and below the red bar, there's a lot of white space.
Yep.
Is that white space part of your calculation?
No, there's actually two separate signs that are being added. One is the box that encompasses Wendy's, and then the box that would encompass the actual scripture of the, of the text.
All right, as we're going through, any of the boards have a question, just jump in, please. Okay, so this is the first, I guess, deviation you want to ask for. I counsel a deviation, call that, I like the word deviation.
Deviation.
All right, so the first one is two A-
Better than variation.
The two A, then next, what's next?
So the two A.
Yeah.
So I'll run counterclockwise around the, around the building, so if you look at the front sheet, we have the two A. Then on the main building side, that sign is labeled as two C, which is, if you look at the third sheet in, is the only sign that's proposed on that, is just the same one of the circle branding of Wendy. That is of compliance, based on the linear footage of that.
So this is in compliance?
That one is in compliance, that's correct.
Okay.
We're allowed about forty square feet there, and we are twenty-seven point zero three square feet on the square footage. I like to add that these signs that we're speaking of right now, they're internally illuminated, but still in compliance. Then going around, let me see, there is some other signage that we want to talk about, primarily near the ordering window. There's the sheet number five, number three, as in you look at the correspondence, those are the menu boards, as well as the pre-sale menus, you know, before you actually get up to the speaker box.
Give us number eight B, ten, one number.
Okay, so the double-faced illuminated menu board, number three, it's where you actually order from, that is fifty-one point seven square feet.
Just bear with us one second, where's number three?
Number three, if you look at the very front of the sheet.
Yeah.
It's at the northwest portion of the building, in the drive-through lane. So this is basically the drive-through menu. Oh, and you want to see what it looks like?
All right, okay, so like almost the last, the last part. All right, yeah, all the way to the back, the last-
Yeah, all the way to the back.
Four pages before last.
Right, and all we have on that is, we don't have what, you know, the menus are going to change, and things of that nature. So we just have the overall box, and internally illuminated again, with removable panels as pricing changes, as well as their menu. That is fifty, almost fifty-two square feet, just a little less on that.
Number three is?
Uh, yes, number three, the total of fifty-one point seven six square feet.
The total of what, fifty?
Fifty-one point seven six.
Okay, what's the, what's allowed there, you know?
This is a menu board, so really, it's kind of a freestanding, not really defined, so that's kind of why we wanted to discuss some of these matters with the board, to kind of get a concurrence, you know, if we need to get relief for this, we certainly would, you know, seek that, but, you know, at this point, we just want to have a dialogue and kind of move forward.
I'm trying to-
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm trying to follow you on number three, which is, and I'm looking at the page, the fourth page from the last on the packet that you gave, and I don't see fifty anything, the fifty-one, or whatever the number is, I see one oh eight by sixty-nine.
Seven point two by seven point six, that's like seven four two-
Yeah, it's square feet.
Seven four two by seven six, roughly fifty-two.
Oh, okay.
Not square inches, we go by four.
Okay.
Square feet, yeah, so when you convert those to inches to square feet, we-
Let me ask you something, compared to Wendy's, each Wareham pretty much the size?
Uh, yeah, I don't have the exact numbers there, but they're pretty much a corporate standard, so they can maintain consistency throughout the band.
Yeah, all right, next one.
So going around, that was three. Now, number five is also, number five's a pre-menu board, which will be-
The page before the one we were just-
The page before the one you looked there. And we just show a panel, again, because we don't have the definitive, but it's a, just over six feet high, little over two feet wide, for a total of, you know, thirteen point two square feet, again, internally illuminated, and not really defined within the regulations. So we're looking to get some, you know, understanding of what the board may want to see from that.
Okay.
Going around the building, we also have number eleven there, which is a pivoting drive-through canopy. So in the packet, there is a canopy towards the end, I believe it's one back from the end, oh, no, it's actually the very last one.
Yep.
So, well, actually, it's kind of funny, we have them backwards, we have to change the site plan, but the pivoting canopy, which has an order speaker in it, but it also has a bar across the top that says clearance nine feet. That number is, number eleven, for enough square feet of that, we're just over seven square feet for the square footage of that sign on top of the bar. Again, not necessarily a building sign, or a freestanding advertising sign, but more directional signage, which could be considered as, as well. Number twelve is a clearance bar as well, which is basically more of a preventative measure, so people don't go through the canopy, hit the awnings and the like. That's relatively small, four feet wide by six feet high, so it's only a couple square, just under two square feet, one point one seven square feet for that.
Question I have is, does this follow the corporate guidelines, or does an owner have, can they deviate from signage or anything else, as far as the building or the project itself is concerned?
Generally, there are corporate standards on what they like to see for signage, obviously the bigger the better, but, and things of that nature, but they generally try to stay in compliance to obviously fit within to the character of the neighborhood. So you generally see the architecture of the symbol, the scripture, the text, the fonts, the colors, all consistent throughout the organization. Sometimes you may have the same size, but it's a little bit smaller, to make it just fit into, whether it's the neighborhood, or fit into the bylaws. So I think they've done this, you know, to adhere to the grace of the saint practicable, what they're looking to do here, obviously. The one relief that you're looking at, we're seeing it very small, because we're a very narrow building, and, you know, we're trying to, and that part faces somewhat of a major root, so it's kind of an important advertisement for the building, but when you look at the two signs independently, you know, they, each one would be applicable to the regulations, or compliance with the regulations, but obviously, one's just a sign, the other one's a brand.
Okay, thank you.
It's two, it's two A that we're talking about that you need relief on, is that-
Two A, that's the one.
I'm sorry, you said the numbers before, but-
Okay, two A is a combination of-
Twenty-nine point eight square feet.
We have a total of forty-three point oh four square feet, which is a combination of the script sign-
Yeah.
Which is twenty-nine point seven nine, and the circle brand, which is thirteen point two, oh, maybe I have them backwards.
Thirteen point two five.
What are the two, breaking them down individually, what are they, thirteen point two, and what was the other one?
Twenty-nine point seven nine.
Twenty, twenty-nine point seven nine.
And equals forty.
And what's the, and you said earlier-
Thirty square feet.
Thirty is, thirty is what's allowed?
Thirty square feet for the defined width of the building.
So if we look at them as two individual signs, they comply?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, the east elevation is for two A, is that correct? Did you give us a nice big color blow up here?
Yeah, we gave you an east colored ones for the south.
On the bigger, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that, that's kind of the, we call that the money shot from the major thoroughwear, so we want to see that-
That's not, that's not two A, that's-
Well, that's two A, I'm sorry. I'm in a different town, but from the major Cranberry Highway.
It's not two A, so then where is two A?
Does that comply with height, with why?
That's two A, there isn't a color picture of two A.
This is not a color picture of two A here?
The two A, which would be this elevation here.
Yeah.
That's two A.
Yep, these two signs would be two A.
Okay, sorry.
What is the height of?
What's the, what's the height of that?
Yes.
I don't have that answer for you, I do apologize.
And the height is, you're looking for a variance on the height, right, because it's a sign, is that, is there something different?
Well, it's mounted on a wall of the building, so it wouldn't be a freestanding sign.
You're looking for a variance on its whole big picture of the sign, not just the height, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, we would, if there's a variance necessary for the sign, because that element of the building, I believe the building height is in compliance, but it's somewhat of an architectural element that's connected to the building, that extends a little above, above the roof.
Are you talking the building height, or the sign height?
Yeah.
Well, we have a building height, and we have the architectural element that's a little bit higher.
Okay.
So we have the Wendy's that's in line with the top of the building, but then we have-
Understood, now I understand, okay.
So we would want to find out, because there's some wording in there that signs can't be above the roof line, but it's kind of weird, we have an undulating architecture, so we want to-
Give that pile on, and is that part of the roof, or is that a part of the sign?
This right here?
Yeah, I know.
That, that's part of, part of the building, it's actually connected to the building and the like, you know, for internally has use within the building and the like.
Let me, if I may, number, two A.
Two A, yes.
That whole wall's thirty feet long?
Uh.
Where the, the one you're asking for relief, sign you're asking for relief, how, 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 how wide is that building?
That building? I may have a, hey, they didn't give me a full-size sign. I don't have that exactly.
The thing is thirty feet, that's why you're allowed thirty feet.
Thirty square feet, correct.
It doesn't look more than thirty feet long.
No, it's a relatively narrow building, as I mentioned before.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And I know there's a range, I don't have the range from the regulations, you know, so many feet, so many feet you're allowed, so many square feet.
So you can't tell me how high above the roof line that is?
Below the roof line, depends on what you call the roof line.
Well, see, that's my next question.
Yeah, that's the roof line, and that would be one of the things that we would try to seek the zoning officials' opinion on, what is that definition of the roof line? Is it the highest peak, or is it the nominal elevation?
Roof line is the roof line, it's the top of the building.
The top of the building. So let me see, I don't have an elevation, let me see if one of these elevations have a dimension on it for you.
Robert, so you're asking, where is, like, the logo, how high from the roof is? That's what you're trying?
No, I wanted, I was asking how high from the top of the roof.
Here?
Yes. No, 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 from the top of the roof of the building, the white portion-
Yeah.
To the top of the sign, the, the, the sign itself, where the Wendy's logo is located, that's all.
Approximately, it's not going to be exact.
Six to eight.
We're looking at the Wendy's to be in line with the main roof line, and then that, the Wendy's will be approximately to the top of it, forty-two inches above that, because the Wendy's is about a forty-two inch circle.
Sort of, okay.
The Wendy's is forty-two inch diameter, the diameter's forty-two inch?
Um, approximately, yes.
So forty-two and thirty, seventy, so you're looking at about six to eight feet?
Correct.
Six to eight feet, okay.
For, for the overall box encompassing both of those signs. Six feet, ten inches.
The height, from the roof to the top of that sign, Mr. Haskell asking, it's about six to eight feet, I'd say.
Thank you. All right, okay, next one.
Thank you. Now we are on the drive-through side of the building. We talked about twelve, which was the bar, there's two there called eight A and eight B, we can ignore those, those are just a call-out for the canopies above, giving rain shelter above the payment window and the pickup window. So looking at the next signs, which are two E and two B.
What, what are they, the eight A and eight B, like rain, like rain shelters, you said?
Not on here, is it?
When you look at, they're, they're basically a canopy or an awning, standing out, so we're covering the gap from our customers reaching in to make their payments.
Why are they different heights? One is six feet, one is eight?
Two and eight?
One at the pickup window, one at the order-
Eight A is six feet, eight B is eight feet.
One at the, I guess, at the paying window, one at the pickup win-
Yeah.
Right.
It's, uh, truthfully, I don't know how architects think sometimes. Um, but obviously they, you see, eight A and eight B, I don't even have them on my list for sizes.
They look the same height and elevation, but...
Yes.
See this, yeah?
Um...
They look the same height, but...
Two A and two B? Yeah, I don't know if it's on here.
Oh, no, that's the width, not the height.
Yes, they would be...
That's the width. She thought that was the height. It's the width. One is six, one is eight.
Right.
Yeah. All right. They are the same height from the ground?
Yes, they are the same height from the ground.
Which is nine, I guess your clearance is nine feet, right?
Correct.
So they're probably nine-two.
And they're little different architecture-wise on the areas that they're covering. One has a double window, one's a single window.
Right.
Um, one area that we would want to talk about as well, which is a, um, sign 2E, which is on the drive-through sign as well. It's kind of the, um, Wendy's logo, that quality service that doesn't cut corners is our recipe.
2E, you said?
2E, that's correct.
And you know what page this two, one of?
See, 2E, that'll show up on one of the elevations, which is one, two...
Third page in.
Third page in. Don't know, I don't think there was a, um... A colored, um, plan of that.
No.
But we do have some data on it.
All right, just, just before five. All right, so what's that?
All right. Now that is the logo sign. Those are, um, basically cut-out stamped cast iron letters that protrude slightly out of the building. So it's kind of a 3D element. Um, there's no lining associated with that, just lighting off the building. They weren't considering that wall signage. It's not branding, it's not really advertisement, it's just more of a quality statement for their customers as they go through. So we wanted to talk to the, uh, commission, you know, and the board about that, as it does have just under thirty-one square feet of area when you encompass that box around it. As far as what's allowed or what's not allowed, I would want to have that discussion and dialogue, say, how is the regulations applicable to, you know, a mission statement or something to that, um, to that effect? You know, obviously, we do have the overall, um, maximum building square footage for that entire facade of the wall, which is fifty-five square feet aggregate for that entire wall. So we do have a few signs that are out there. We have, uh, 2B, which is a, uh, again, an eternally illuminated Wendy's sign. Just a text script, which is above the, um, pickup window, which you've seen on that elevation as well. Um, and that is approximately twenty-nine point five-three square feet. And then we also have, uh, number ten, which is a non-illuminated sign. It's a, more of a placard that's going to be just after the pickup window that says, "Thank you." Um, that's relatively small sign. That's about two square feet.
Yep.
So, those 2B and ten added together give us approximately thirty-one point five-three square feet, where fifty-five is allowed on the side. Um, now we have that thirty-point seven-eight square foot mission statement that they have, and how do we want to treat that? Is that an advertising sign on a building? Uh, because if you add that to aggregate with the other twos, we may need relief for that. But if it's not considered an advertising sign or something like that, um, then it wouldn't be applied towards the aggregate. So that's a discussion piece that we would look at. Um, and if there's relief necessary for that, in your opinion, we, we, uh, may seek that.
All right. Uh, anyone in the a- in the audience want to speak in favor or against? Do you have any comment, Alan, sir? Uh, ma- can, can we take the lady first? Okay. Ms. Slaven.
Alan Slaven Sleckman. Um, on the signed bylaw, as everybody knows, I wrote it. That's currently in place. Uh, that suggests you, after they asked for the different pieces they're asking for, to go through the signed bylaw. Uh, you're allowed so much square footage in the front of a building, you're adding signage all the way around the building. So you have to make sure that's actually allowed, because basically normally what you do is you get a request from the building commissioner saying, "This doesn't comply, you have to go to ZBA." So I don't think you have that yet. I don't know whether you have from the planning board anything yet either yet, but I'm just letting you know that I think some of the stuff is outside what's allowed. So you got, you're talking about a bunch of variances.
I, that's why I was wondering if they talked to David, but I guess, how ma- he's...
He's just not easily available.
I know.
We're still interviewing people.
He's the guy to talk to. He's the one who could...
Would be David?
David, Mr. Aquina, yeah.
But he's only available part-time because he took another job.
Even less than part-time, so, but he's very, like, knowledgeable about this stuff. He's the person to discuss with that.
Okay. And that was s- one of the reasons why we kind of, we know that the town is looking for assistance with individuals being part-time and not, no longer, um, you know, with, with the town. And, you know, we were directed with, you know, the best of our knowledge to come here and, you know, have a dialogue with everybody, because you know, we're not holding back any punches. We want to do it right and, um, you know, move forward. So, you know, basically, it sounds like your interpretation is, the applicable signage is for the front of the building.
Yeah, if you're putting anything on, on a building, it has to comply. If you're putting, there's no such thing as two separate signs on the front. It's all one sign, it's how a square footage goes. Uh, if it's, if it's all part of one sign, and they have a two-piece logo, it's part of the sign. Take a look and see carefully.
So, excuse me while they're looking. If I heard you earlier in your original presentation, you went to David Aquina and you were informed that his availability is so limited, it would be a good idea for you to come here and get
Yes.
the pulse of this board.
Yeah, i- i- it would...
Get some, some direction, because nobody could give you any direction.
Correct, and we went to the planning and...
They're getting kicked down, the kid's getting kicked down the road back where you started from.
Yep, right.
Feel like a yo-yo pretty soon.
Right, and, and we do apologize too, because there's new engineering...
I don't like the yo-yo thing in, in government and in town management. I just don't like it. That's why I'm on this board.
No.
I like to see things done efficiently, and I find what you've been put into already inefficient.
Yes.
All right. It's not your fault that we don't have a person in the position. It's not your fault.
No, 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 I, that's understandable, and, and sometimes those situations aren't avoidable, but i- i- it happens.
It's not your fault.
Right.
All right, let me...
I don't see you paying fine if somebody else's issue.
Let me say something, Alan. On eleven twenty-three point one, it says for measurement of signs, sign area shall be the entire area of the sign bounded by a single continuous line that encloses the extreme limits of the sign surface. So...
But you have to see how they put that sign together. It's like Walmart. When Walmart did their sign, they have a little logo above it. It was all part of the sign, with those two separate pieces. I'm just, give me a heads up.
That it becomes two separate signs.
It was considered one sign of Walmart. You'll have to see, these are things you're gonna have to figure out.
We, I mean, they have time.
I, I understand. I mean, I'll give you a good example of the consistency of this town. Let's use the road that Walmart is currently built on. The, um, people that put in the solar panels required to put a sidewalk with no curb in. Across the street, there's no sidewalk, no curb. You go up the street, there's this development where this is going, there's a sidewalk and a curb, and then there's a liquor store that doesn't have a curb, but they do have, you, so, um, it's interpretations. And if you've got a different board making a decision every time, you've got helter-skelter. Again, what they did at Walmart has got nothing to do, in my opinion, with what's going on at Wendy's. I think we need to look at the bylaw and give the gentleman some answers.
That's what I'm trying to say. Yeah, and I, I understand, you know, and...
Can I get a little clarification on, um, the, some of the drawings that you've sent with the sign? Um, so, I don't know, I'm gonna show you what page I'm looking at.
Yes, okay.
It's like kind of in the middle of the packet. It looks, can you tell me what that black piece is? It almost looks like it's an entire sign, which would be separate from which, what is drawn, and I don't know if that's maybe the electric component?
The black piece?
Yeah. Right, so this, this is the, this is the east elevation sign, correct?
Yes.
Looks like it. So what is this continuous piece here?
That, tha- that's the sign itself.
But that would be one piece, and you said it's separate, so that's why I'm a little confused.
Well, yeah, when you look at the actual logos on the sign and how it's... I, I understand, and that's kind of one of the reasons why we're here, to get that knowledge. You know, this, it is a separate panel that's projecting out of the building. You know, that panel is meant to be blending into the background.
But that panel contains the logo and the Wendy's.
Okay, yes.
Right?
You're correct.
Yeah, okay.
But that panel does con- contain the logos.
Yeah, so that, to me, that would kind of look like it's a, a sign attached entirely.
For calculation purposes.
So...
So that...
This, your circle, it's forty-two inches. The bylaw allows us thirty-six inches.
So you'd need relief on that.
Right.
For, uh, the round...
We, we found in here where it says three feet in height, which is thirty-six inches, and you've got forty-two.
Correct, okay.
For the little girl in the circle.
Little girl, and the actual Wendy's below too, is, you know, from the bottom of the Y to the top of the D is also forty-two.
You're gonna be coming back, you're gonna want to know what you're looking for relief for, so you're gonna be looking for relief for that.
Your best, your best bet, sir, is, uh, wait for Mr. Aqui- I mean, you guys get some time. Your best bet is, hopefully, Mr. Aquina checks it out. I'll, I'll send him an email. Hopefully, he could look at it.
Yeah.
Like I said, he's, he's very knowledgeable about this stuff.
And, uh, we...
I mean, we know a little bit, not much.
Yeah, and if we haven't done so far, we could definitely forward this package, so you can share internally, because sometimes
It does look good, it does look good, but let's see, wh- where do you need, let's do it properly, see where you need the relief and where, where you don't need the relief.
Correct, okay, tha- tha- that's great. So we'll continue to follow up with, um...
Mr. Aquina, I just want to listen to the lady. Ma'am, you want to come forward?
Well, he answered what I was going to ask.
Oh, he did, okay.
That's good.
Anyone else want to say something? No? Yes, Robert, go ahead.
Question I have, uh, Mr. Slaven. Do you, does the town consider all signs as one sign, or, because the way I look at it, if there is a sign, no matter what the logos are on it, like that, that one area, that's one sign. Then if we go to another part of the building, there's some other lettering or something else, corporate lettering, that's another sign. So where is the town on this?
You have to look at the signed bylaw. I really, I'm not supposed to tell you just how to do it. I'm just telling you that when I originally wrote it, it's basically, if you have a front building, you have so many square feet of frontage. That's where you take your measure for what's allowed for square footage for a sign itself. You have different things. If you look at some, when you have little notes that say, you know, pharmacy, always others. The main sign, there's a certain amount of square footage allowed versus the actual flat surface of a length of a building in front of it.
But if I read this correctly, it says that there is a, there is room, uh, to look at this if it's set up. They can come before the Board of Appeals for a special permit to do that, and it says that right in your bylaw. That's why I asked you the question.
But it's set up that the, basically, the...
No, I can't hear you.
Uh, I'm really, we're supposed to be here for that.
Sorry to ask you that in the back of the room, Mr. Slaven.
It's, y- I mean, you're, you're asking for him to do it. We're supposed to interpret the bylaw.
Yeah, I can't really do that for you. All I'm trying to get, all I'm letting you know is that the sign itself is on the front of a building. It's a sign. Usually, it's the name of a company. Some companies have a logo, and they build a sign in two pieces and bolt it together. You have to make a decision. That's, when we put this together, basically, if the building inspector basically said the sign doesn't comply with the bylaw, they can come here before the ZBA to get a variance. If you were going before the planning board, the planning board normally look at the signs, because this particular location, I think, is under the planning board's control. And therefore, they would come, because they have a drive-through, et cetera. And they would look at the signs, and they could make a determination also, based on what the building commissioner said. So they're here to talk to you about asking for variance, which is allowed under the signed bylaw. You can, you can accept anything you want. It's your call. Because you're allowed a variance.
I get it. And I understand why the gentleman's here. I want to, I, I just sort of like, he's here because of the lack of...
No, it's obvious why he's here. I mean, it's, it's really, it's nobody's fault that, that an employee has gone to another town. I mean, that is what it is.
It's still the town's fault. If you can't comply with people on it right now, it is a problem.
No.
Yeah, no, I s- it's, yeah, I, and you just wanted some type of heads up.
Yeah, and heads up.
The way I see it is, and I think what Nazi was getting at, is that this just happens to be a, a super technical, uh, area of the bylaw that...
With e- every aspect of it.
Yeah, that we would really, probably, I myself in this instance, would rely really heavily on what Mr. Aquina had to say. Um, um...
Okay, um, well, tha- that's understandable, and by, by no means, like we said, you, we, we do have some time, and we want to make sure that we do go the, the appropriate proc- you know, procedures, uh, through the town, because of timing. If we wait until we're ready to put the sign up to ask the question, we're in trouble.
Right.
So, um, I, I think we understand. We'll continue to follow up and try to get a little more clarifications. We'll provide some digital copies for sharing amongst everybody to help maybe continue the dialogue, uh, for interpretations and, and the like. Um, I just maybe ask, you know, this would be the package that, whether we need relief or not, would be looking for approval, so um, I, maybe if we could just discuss the initial thoughts of the board as to, you know, regardless if it needed relief or not, is there anything you see that may be obtrusive, that you think might not be reasonable for this type of use in this location, or, kind of just, not take a straw vote, but just kind of solicit some preliminary feedback from, you know, individual members?
All right. Well, as I'm reading it quickly, you are allowed, like, one sign on each side of the building? And it goes, Robert, you were asking this, usually by the lengths of the building, to a mac- so thirty feet long, thirty square feet sign. The, the big, the highest that matches fifty feet long building, fifty square feet. Then it's sixty feet building, then it's fifty-five, start to decrease. And if the building is a hundred feet long, maximum seventy-five square feet. But there are allowed on each each side a sign, and up to the lengths of the building, but, but according to that chart. So, but then again, David is the man to ask about this.
Yeah, 'cause obviously, we're maybe breaking that total square footage down into two smaller signs and looking at her aggregate, which I think is reasonable in, in many instances, but obviously, it would be, you know, determination of the town to whether it's by the word of the, of the bylaw, or if relief would be required.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I think it was great he came down, so we'll wait to hear from David, and then we could decide. You guys still have time, like I said, so...
Yeah, we, we will start chasing down David, but it was great to at least present and have you understand what we're...
They do look good to me, I don't know.
But that's, my reaction is that as long as the proper relief is requested, I'd be inclined to accept what I see tonight. It's...
Now, my recommendation, when you hear from David, like I said, I want to email him.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know to... Did you apply yet with David?
Um, I apologize for this, because in the same circumstances, our company, the project manager on this, has left the building as well.
Ah, now we can make it your fault.
So it is our fault, so we're, um, so I'm filling in for a, a new project manager that's, uh, is, is taking over for this project.
All right, so you, your best bet, so to get the ball rolling.
The process has been going along, and it ended up with, let's talk to the board and see what we can get.
Right, but the best way to proceed this...
Continue with David.
Apply, apply for a sign permit.
Okay.
And that's how you get David's attention. He's not gonna, I mean, he's very busy, and the best, and if you apply for a permit, if he want, if you need a variance, he'll send you for a variance. I mean, you throw it in front of him, just apply for the permit. You gotta apply for it regardless.
Correct.
So, and then he'll direct you and us which way to go. And that would, and then we know exactly where you need a variance or where you, where you don't.
Sounds like a definitive plan and directive. We appreciate that.
Okay, uh, anyone else want to add something for the gentleman before he leaves? Robert, you want to send him or some, oh, good, Jen, everybody. Good.
I wish everything was this clear when we get plans and...
Well, we, truthfully, we kind of threw that together quickly, so hopefully, um, we'll even make it, I call it Fisher Price, you know, try to answer the questions as easy as possible, so, um, thank you all, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
So let me say one more, make it clear. If David this, if David says in his letter you need a variance or special permit, you might as well apply for that.
Yes.
Don't just come back to the, let us know what he said.
No, we, we would do that. We'll, we'll move on the board, say, this is our thing. Our intention is to file. We'll get your schedules and...
Okay, and, uh, when you come, if you have to come here for a variance, don't, I wouldn't bombard the board with all this info, just the exact one you need a variance.
Right.
The one you need a variance come with, don't bring the whole thing.
We won't talk about the other one.
No, there's no sense. If they comply, why you need us?
Perfect.
All right?
Easy enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. That was... All right, uh, correspondence. Do we have some correspondence that needs to be read? Staff report.
Projects, what's that? We have five coming up next time.
What are we gonna do with these before we go too far? We're gonna put these all in the folder and you'll...
Rayav, that's his last.
Let's get this, let's get this stuff.
Next hearing, next time, the seven meeting, the seven hearings, so if you guys plan to stay a little late, all right?
What is this now?
On the twenty-second. There's a lot of them. Has deadline too, Jen, if we can all show up and plan to stay late. You busy?
So, oh, yes.
Are you not gonna be here?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, uh... So you're not gonna be here on the twenty-second?
Have we had alternates due? We don't know. All right, I have, we brought up Rayav. I have a good question on Rayav. I looked at this. It said the time to make a decision runs out today, but we've extended until the twenty-second.
Yes, you came up with that one.
So, we had this conundrum in front of us on a different thing once before, and there was an opinion that even though we've extended, we have not extended the time to make a decision.
No, I have this certain one.
That was, that was the, that was the...
He signs, which he did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have him sign a form that extend, you can either send a public hearing, or you can send a second hearing, you have to...
So, so the May eighth that's on here has been extended to the twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay, that was my first...
Actually, I think I extended it two days later, so I could read it.
Okay, well, you know, shows here that it, tonight's the night.
So Bob, next time...
Bob's here for a different...
I understand.
I am, but now that he's brought up the issue of you're not gonna have a full board next time.
We, we will...
Walter and Jake are here, you will.
Walter, Jake, we have fi- we have five. Mr., uh, Cruz can sit on it. He was here, and Jake can.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's fine.
And if we, and if we don't wrap it that night, she, we could use the mullen hood, and she could jump back in.
Okay.
You're talking about for Maxi gas, right? You're not, you're not ninety-six LLC?
No, I, no, that's, we're talking about the Maxi gas thing.
Yeah, but he's here, you, you're here for...
I'm here for, to talk to the board about that, yes.
He's got another question for us, too.
For when you get to, uh, be a general, uh, meeting.
Other business. I think now would be the time.
Yeah, yeah, new business. That's fine.
Well, it's not, it's, as your own business.
I have, I have some, yeah, don't, don't go away from that for now. My name is Robert Perry, and I represent an applicant, uh, ninety-six Realty LLC, petition thirty-three eighteen. And if you recall, that's, that's a lot across from Veronica, up on the corner of Farring Hill Road, Square Island Road. And it bounced around here for a long, long time. And, uh, I, I've been trying to get it back here. Last time I was before this board is the night Kyle quit. We didn't have a board... quit. We didn't have a board. We'd already lost people to the point where I had no chance of anything happening here. And I've written letters. I've been into the planning office. I've been trying to get it back before this board for a long time. And that's the reason I'm here tonight, is to see how we go about that. I agreed that, you know, I would happily pay for re-notifying the abutters, certified mail. There's been a suggestion that maybe you got to start over again. I don't see what you'd do. It's still an open hearing before this board, as far as I'm concerned. But if, you know, if you want me to refile a petition, I'll do it. But I want to be able to refile it without paying a filing fee again, and the advertising and all that. You know, that kind of fell apart.
You never made a decision on that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It just died. It just passed.
Well, it didn't die. I said I would be back, that I would file before the town clerk, which I did, and that didn't go anywhere. I knew that.
I would recommend that you really apply. I mean, we could waive the fee.
Well, that's all I'm looking. I'll reapply. I mean, I have no problem with that. As a matter of taking my own documentation and copying it again, as long as I don't have to go back to David and waste months and months trying to get a refusal letter.
And pay for the advertising, I guess. No, it's the same refusal letter we could use. It's good for two years.
Yes, okay.
And yeah, you got to pay for advertising and certified.
I'll do that. I'll do that. If I don't pay a filing fee, I'll pay for advertising and notification, so...
And refile.
That's fair enough. I'll do that. I appreciate that.
Okay.
As long as we have enough of a board to consider it.
What's that?
As long as we have enough of a board to consider it at some point.
Are you going to try to get on for the 22nd, or...
Oh, no, 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 not at all. No, no, ordinary course. Ordinary course.
Okay.
I probably won't even get a file for another week or two. I'm pretty busy there.
Ordinary course.
All right. I just want to give everyone heads up to on in Ju... In June, June 19, I'm not here.
No.
Oh, no, okay. 26, sorry, right here.
Well, I don't need you anyway because you have to reclude yourself.
Yeah, that's true. But I'm just letting everybody know I'm probably...
Okay, all right. I thought you were talking to me. I'm sorry.
I'm done with you. You can leave.
I can... Oh, Jesus. I love you guys.
All right, so June 26.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Good night, folks.
Thank you. All right, what's the zoning amendment?
He's looking for suggestions for zoning amendments, and I have a couple. And I actually printed out the pages that I'm interested in.
What is this?
Zoning amendments.
Zoning amendments. The first one is 390. This one for you. Oh, wait a minute. That's the one that's highlighted. That's mine. I'm sorry. Yeah, this is one for you. Doesn't matter. You can have that.
So marijuana.
This one for you.
Hmm?
This one for Bob. Here's more. The... 3... I get it. Let me keep one. Let me keep one. I didn't keep it for myself. Sorry. All right. So on the marijuana, the 390.
Okay, with the blue, you want... You'd like to do the changes?
The blue is everything. That's right. Everything that's in blue is the way I would change it.
Okay, we're starting from the 386.
386.
I haven't had a chance to look at this now, but I do recall it coming out.
I'm actually not clear on what we're doing.
Yeah.
What is this?
You can make recommendations for zoning amendments for all town meeting.
Okay.
The planning board...
Jasmine, you can't...
When do we have to do this, bud? The deadline won't be until August or September for October town meeting, but the sooner you get it started, the better. It is for everybody who needs to find to make a lot more chances to do that.
These... It's just copies out of the...
So this is how it works. Say, we've been getting, say, let's say, on the village district, we've been getting a lot of application. People get a variance for two feet setback or something that's common and it's not fair. Say the setback is 10 feet, and everybody's been coming in because they only have seven, eight feet. We recommend that we change the bylaw to six feet.
Yeah.
For setback.
Okay.
So we recommend that the board that... It's a legislative board. It's the planning board. He's the one who can bring it into the town warrant, to the town meeting and put it in the warrant. But we suggested to them, and if they agree to it, right, they have to agree. The planning board has to agree with it?
The planning board, I don't... I don't think they have to agree because anytime they make their recommendation one way or the other, it goes to town meeting. If it makes town warrant, it makes town warrant.
Right. And then...
They can recommend against it, but once it gets to town meeting floor, they can say, we recommend against it.
And if the body votes for it, then the setback becomes six feet instead of 10. So we don't have all these hearing and variances.
So who can bring this to the town floor? Any of the boards or just the...
We recommend...
You recommend it to the planning board. They haven't yet turned something down and said, no, we won't hear this unless they think it needs further study. Unless they recommend it for further study this time, and they won't put it on as an...
Yeah, okay.
We can give it to the town to put on the board, only the planning.
Only the planning, okay.
We have to be legislative board. So anyway, so, okay, Jimmy, now let's hear it. What are your...
So I'm... You said, let's go back to 386. So going back to 386, 386 is currently written that it's only allowed a drive-through in the general commercial district. I'm suggesting that that become number A. First of all, I put an S on after restaurants.
Restaurant. So the blue is your recommendation?
The blue is my recommendation. The black is what's existing text right now.
So where is it allowed here? Where is the black?
See, 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 the black, all the black lettering, that's what the current bylaw is, okay? And I'm saying, leave it just the way it is, as A. See, I'm saying, add the letter A and leave all the words just the way they are. And then add B. Drive-through restaurants shall be permitted in the strip commercial, planned commercial, and industrial districts by a special permission, provided the following conditions are met.
It's the same conditions, right?
Minus number four.
Minus number four on the first one.
Oh, gotcha.
I'm just adding that drive-throughs should be allowed in strip commercial, planned commercial, industrial districts.
I have a feeling a lot of people have an opinion about this, but...
Why would they have to be in industrial?
Why would they... Why would they be excluded? If somebody wants to put a Wendy's inside the industrial park, who's it hurting? I guess. Who are we protecting?
Nobody. But you're taking away from the commercial.
Taking what away from the commercial?
The commercial.
The losing industrial space, which is pretty limited.
What do you mean? How am I taking it away from them? We can't have two Wendy's in the same town?
No, no, no.
You could have five.
See, and then there's less space for industrial purposes.
We have...
So if you've got 3,000 people working in an industrial park, and they want to eat, you mean you want them to leave the industrial park and go in the commercial strip zone? That's... Is that you protecting?
No.
It's not just that. There's a limited number. There's a limited amount of space for industrial space.
Exactly. And we don't want to lose that industrial space.
And industrial uses are so restricted.
This is a recommendation. We'll have to all agree to it.
I see your point, so I would not be... I wouldn't... What's that? What's that, Bob?
Let's not forget, we got microphones out here, please.
That's... That's okay.
Not to...
Um, I wouldn't... He's afraid. He says, he thinks we're saying something we wouldn't want heard.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There's nothing I'm saying that I wouldn't want heard. I don't have a problem with striking industrial.
We'll get them all agree to it.
If that's what you guys all agree to.
Right.
This is just my... This is my first take on it. Get the conversation going.
Planned commercial. What's planned commercial?
That's where... That's where JCPenney, Target...
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, like a mall thing. All right.
What else is there? There's a couple other things there.
Just leave it the way it is now. So should we... Well, if you... If you do this, you get a, I guess, eliminate one now.
Why?
I mean, eliminate...
No, number one. Number one. No, A, A, A. I want A to stay. In the general commercial district, they want it. There's no direct entrance egress from a state highway artery or... That's number four condition.
He doesn't want that one, Part B.
I don't want that on these other ones.
Oh, okay, okay. I know what you're saying. All right.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
On Cranberry Highway, I'm not going to make them put the drive-through restaurant inside a mall. They want to come right off Cranberry Highway down, you know, or anywhere that's, you know...
All right, let's go turn the page.
That's that one. So that's... That's my suggestion on 386. My suggestion on 390 is that 85 or 90 percent of the rhetoric or words in that bylaw are rhetoric and unnecessary. So I'm eliminating a lot of the words. I'm eliminating 392, 393, 394, and 395, and 396, and 390, you know. We don't need all those words. It says that they have to have a state permit. So to set... To five times put in here that it has to have a state permit, it's redundant. It's all redundant language.
Where else does it... 395, where else doesn't say it in that section? I'm just curious.
The marijuana... Let me see. Such facilities that... And then it goes to the extent that such facilities are permitted under state laws.
Okay.
Number 395.
Is this something we can digest and talk about?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I haven't talked... I mean, it's just...
I'm saying, this is... I looked at it. I spent, oh, 30 or 40 seconds on this.
I mean, it...
Wrote it up. Right in here. You got two seconds.
Yeah, but anyway, it will...
Take it home. Read it.
Is 397 in there, though? Because marijuana sign requirements are different than our zoning bylaw requirements because they have strict regulations about how they can advertise so it's not appealing to children. So the sign...
Who does?
The state does.
Okay.
So that should remain in there because if they think they...
So signage for marijuana establishments shall be in conformance with state regulations.
Right, which is more strict than our town...
So why do we need... So why do we need to put that?
Why not? Because if not, if not, they might think they might...
Yeah, it needs to be clear.
But they still have to conform to state regulations.
But just, I mean, there's no way around it. Your bylaw didn't say.
So our bylaw cannot permit something that the state already prohibits.
Right. Well, we can't permit... Do you know that off the top of your head?
Do I know that off the top of my head?
What the state prohibits?
Well, it says right here, signage for marijuana establishments shall be in conformance with state regulations.
Let me... Let me cut. Let me say something. Whatever we agree on, regardless, it will go to town council and redefine it. So if we write it wrong, or like we pick in this, like Jasmine says, he'll come back, says, he will say, you know what, you can't do this. It won't... We don't just make the call. They're reviewer, right? They'll end up reviewing it. Planning board review everybody. Then they say, okay, we could do it.
Yep.
So just keep what you want, and then...
Give everybody a copy. I didn't expect everybody to say, I agree. I just want you to read it.
I also would like to suggest, which we did, setbacks on the R-130 zone, that everybody keeps coming back with the small lots in R-130. The setback, it's 130 and 30, and 30 in the back. And the last time, we changed it to 50. However, we should change it for existing lots, the way it used to be, 20, 10, and 10. For example, if somebody has a house on a 5,000 square feet lot, and he wants to add a garage, and adding the garage, he still have, say, 10 feet setback from the sides, he can't. He'll have to come for a variance. And we've been getting a lot of those. A shed as well, because all these lots, like Charge Pond Road area, just to give you an example, Charge Pond is the R-130 zone. And on the whole road, all the lots are 10,000 square feet. So anybody wants to add a shed or a garage, he needs a variance. The bylaw was written back in, I think, 2006, and I think it was written poorly, the way it was written for new subdivisions. And they should have said, it's only for new subdivisions. And it took the whole area. And it's not fair to a lot of people to spend $1,000 on permits and lawyers and...
And fees.
I think you all would agree that. We talked about this so many...
And we did last time, but the thing is, we changed...
Get in front of the...
They only changed the frontage to 50.
But then you have... So this is conventional standards for existing small lots based on lot sizes up to 15,000 square feet.
Right, but this is not...
You want lots bigger than that.
That's not an R-130 zone, though. That's the thing. Can you measure that? This is not an R-130.
Can we solve the problem, Nazzy, by making a very, very simple statement in the bylaw that says, existing lots enjoy some grandfathering rights? I mean, it would be a little more sophisticated than that, but pre-existing or preformed...
When does go on?
Built lots.
That's when, in October?
Because Dave Aquino went out. He took the average of the lot sizes in those areas, and that's how he created that number.
Oh, so it's done?
It's done.
That's done? Oh, never mind. Don't mind me.
Up to 15,000 square feet.
Okay, Roseanne, Roseanne Adana.
No, that's fine.
The regular setback's a fine.
He did. He did very good, too. That's perfect. Oh.
So we're good?
Yeah, we're good. I guess somebody listens to me from before listened.
Yeah, we've talked about it so many times. I was sure.